...with allegiance to the applied and United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the letter of the Constitution for all.
Good morning, everybody. I see we have an amendment in the agenda. Looks like Peggy's writing.
Yes. The amendment is to authorize court members to sign a letter requesting legislative action on Amendment to Iowa Code Section 232.142, Section 5, changing the limit on beds from 52 to 282, and the Health and Human Services Appropriation Bill. And we're requested that be put up.
See, there never used to be any limit on beds in the state of Iowa until we built our addition on detention centers. And then they put a limit on them.
Trying to slow down your growth.
Yeah.
That's what they were trying to do. The other detention centers were fighting us. We were cost effective and somebody else wasn't.
You aren't liked by some of the other centers.
Uh-huh.
You aren't liked by some of the other centers.
Well, most of them are coming around and agreeing we were right and making see the light.
Okay. Any other changes? Anything else for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. We have minutes from March 16. Any additions or corrections to notes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion to second to approve the minutes from March 16. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. So anyone in the public this morning, I'd like to speak to at the Donald agenda. Hearing none. Your side is Michelle Pinter from Humboldt County. We have elected chair.
Yay.
So I just, I wanted to take the chance to kind of update you guys on what we have been doing through, I just did the stats through 2014. Even though our fiscal year runs July 1st to June 30th, since then I have all that for 2015, I just did all of last year's for you guys. And so you can kind of see, I put together this kind of our stat of the majority of things that Public Health does. So our nursing visits, our home care visits, family support workers, and early head start visits, and then postpartum, WICs, immunizations, flu clinics, blood pressures, all of that. But I didn't include in there, I did a little bit at the bottom, just the extra above and beyond things that Public Health does that we receive some funding for but not all. Just to kind of give you an idea, and the second page is just some of our grant dollars that we receive for the services we provide. Just letting you know what we've been doing through the year, and also some of where the county tax dollars are going and being spent for some of these things, where the grant dollars are being spent. And like I said, some of the stuff along the bottom, and I didn't include it all in there, just things we do above and beyond that we can't necessarily bill it to a grant or anything like that. And that's where some of the county tax dollars are used for, are those types of services.
Corporate community health?
Corporate community health is where we have two nurses that go out to different businesses within Humboldt County to provide wellness streams, blood pressures, different lab tests, blood tests that they might want done. We partner with our lab at the hospital and we go out to the local businesses and provide basically a wellness stream for them.
That's bill charged to the corporations?
Right. Well, they'll charge like if there's a blood test ran. The patient themselves will sometimes pay for that, but it's at a discounted price.
School audits?
We do, I have my immunization nurse Nancy Brandhoy, she goes every year and does school audits. So all the school buildings here in Humboldt County, she goes out and she reviews every student's charts, health charts, to make sure that all their immunizations are up to date.
Yeah.
Yep. And if they're not, then she works with the school nurse to notify the parents to let them know what it is they need to have done yet.
Is it just the elementary or all the way through?
All the way through.
That's good.
Yeah. So as you can see, over nineteen hundred charts she audits every year. And it's, it's been very well, it's worked, probably, I think last year was the year she said was the best school audit she's ever had. So she complimented the school nurses too.
It helps keep them current.
It does help to keep them current. Yeah.
You know, Jerry might tell them about this. Granted, it'd be a Hope program. Tell us about the Hope program.
The Hope program?
I have to sell that board in my ear, buddy. Tell us about anything you can do.
Just a little bit longer, Carl, when you get to pass that box. But, um, what's, our Hope's program is that we have two family support workers. They both work part-time, roughly thirty hours a week. And we go out and see any moms that are prenatal up until the child turns three years old. And so we, about two years ago, and Jerry got to be part of this through our Board of Health, two years ago we received our state credentialing. And so there's lots of policies and guidelines and different things that that program has to follow. But basically what we do is we work on education with the parents, child development, nutrition, lots of times new moms, whether it's new mom who has a healthy baby, or whether it's new mom who has a special needs or multiple births, lots of questions as to what my baby should be doing at six months old, at eighteen months old. And then also working with some of those parents who maybe don't have all the resources available to them as other parents do, and so setting them up, making referrals, whether it's to AEA, or whether it's to the Food Pantry, or Upper Des Moines. Just really, besides working with the parents, those two family support workers do a lot of partnering in the community with other resources that we have. And we do have an interpreter on staff now too, who works part-time for us. And she has been a huge asset to help us outreach our Hispanic families into that program, plus our WIC program, our immunizations, anything that Public Health kind of offers. Our family planning clinic, Lisbeth Lopez, our interpreter, has done wonderful to bring in some of our Hispanic population to make sure they're being served too.
One generic thing I'd say about the program when we went out and made some visits, just a general observation, was that a lot of young mothers that live in the area that are there because of work or whatever, don't have family parents or other relatives close at hand. They're young mothers, they haven't, you know, they don't have a lot of experience yet. And the way they work with them is it really helps them educate them. And I think one of the best things I saw them was just to have them work with their children to read to them. Just the simple thing of reading. If it's a stay-at-home mom and they have an opportunity to be around, just getting them to read. Because I think what happens is those kids get a little behind it when they start out for school or preschool. They don't get into the program as early sometimes. And so some of that, if the mothers can do it on, really make, I could see the difference. And they document a lot. I mean, I work as, I mean, that part of the job, I would not enjoy. I mean, about equal amount of time I bet goes into documentation, it's actually visiting with them. Which is amazing how much documentation there is. It's a good program.
I was wondering, do you see the number of families you're serving going up? Or is it stable? Or is it going down? Or?
I would say in 2014, we saw an increase in the number of families. And that's kind of across the board in our Hope's program, especially in a lot of our skilled nursing that we're doing. What we received with Webster County Health Department, we were one of that partnered with them through a state of community care team grant. And so through that grant, I've outreach and partnered, especially with our physician's clinic, with the emergency room department, with the hospital, and other departments within the hospital. But we've partnered a lot on, the referrals we get are kind of patients who might fall through the cracks. Maybe they don't have the insurance that they need to get to a certain physician. Maybe they don't have the transportation. Maybe it's a nutrition thing, which we've partnered with our dietitian on. If it's mental health, I go out personally and meet with them and then help them get to wherever they need to go for mental health services. So our community care team grant has really upped our numbers in a lot of, a lot of areas as far as Public Health goes, because it's just expanded the types of services we're able to offer. So I would say in 2014 and into 2015, we have seen our numbers increase. And if you ask the staff, they'll definitely tell you. They feel a lot busier right now.
Be kind of nice to have last year sheets.
Yes. And I, and I didn't think about that when I did that, but I can do that for you. And I can send it with Jerry if you want me to, after our next Board of Health meeting, if he's not in the field when he shows up.
Oh, cool.
No, he doesn't.
Pretty good.
Yes. Yes, I will send that along.
I'll forget one.
Yeah, thank you.
One quick question I have for Peggy. I know on our contract, we had mentioned that it just goes ahead and remains every year. Do we need to change it though, because the funding amount changed? The contract I have, we signed June of 2013, and then we changed the funding from seventy-five thousand to eighty-six thousand. So do we need to do an amendment to this?
Up to the board, I don't know if that's a constant or if that's a varying figure. I think it would, to be based upon your expenses and income through the year.
And it does say that during the first fiscal year, such funding shall be seventy-five thousand and shall be remitted by July 2014. Thereafter, based on year and expenditures and revenues, the hospital shall negotiate annual accounting for funding.
Yeah, I agree.
Perfect.
That's a good contract.
Perfect.
Anyway, it's a more flexible.
Thank you.
Just go spend the time.
I do. I do it very well.
Anybody have any other questions for Michelle? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're a little bit off from here. I have a few items to bother and do our amendments, apparently. If you have the amended agenda, or other board members to sign the request for legislative action. If you want to do this here while I go.
And what Mort asked me to do was to type up a letter to have all of these signed, and then I'll send it on to the members of the House, of the House of Human Services, Health and Human Services Appropriation Committee.
Sure. I think it's a great idea.
And it's very simple. It just says, Dear Members, this letter is to state that the Humboldt County, that Humboldt County fully supports and needs the changes indicated on the attachment. The attachment is what I put on the back of the letter.
Yeah, okay.
The appropriation bill, can you still go through this year, can't there be any of any?
Mm-hmm. Well, I'll make a motion to authorize the board members to sign this letter requesting legislation action.
I'll support that motion.
Motion to second to authorize board members to sign the letter, fill out the appropriation committee.
He's got them started here.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. All right, I think we can do a report now before we get to the range. Jerry, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, Thursday morning, I guess I had one item this week, the Board of Health at seven in the morning. Michelle was here. Kind of go over monthly, or bi-monthly, just things that were on this list. I mean, she has a breakdown of the dollar means and stuff, and how they're being utilized. We're pretty well on target. All the Elder Bridge money always gets utilized 100%. And if there's any overage, she can sometimes get a little bit at, at the end of the year, if they don't, Elder Bridge statewide doesn't get used, and there's sometimes a little funding there. Otherwise, she has to take it out of other funds, and she can explain that. I talked to them a couple, or meeting before last, and they were figuring the eighty-six thousand's going to be adequate for this year. So they, that's why there was no increase. I do think they're doing more, and she touched on it, I think they're doing more and more in-home visits, trying to help more and more people stay in their homes longer. I think that's the goal of a lot of people, if they're, you know, we're living longer, we're trying to find ways to not utilize the hospital and care center expenses any quicker than you have to. So, I mean, individually, most people would like to stay in their home. And that's, and I'm glad to hear her say that she kind of, trying to find those that, there are people in the middle that just don't want to search for help. And it's always hard, kind of hard to get into their homes and get started. But a lot of times a friend or a family member, a neighbor, a neighbor will say, you know, so-and-so needs help. And they can indiscreetly go in there and at least make a visit with them and tell them what their service is.
You're making moves in some of the areas. I mean, some of those too. Some of those people have no idea of anybody to contact. They have no friends.
They don't.
They don't have a family structure, support.
It's really hard for a lot of those younger ones, I think, is they're in newer communities. They don't really know the names of people in the community. And it's hard for them to get out and socialize, even to make young acquaintances, you know, which I, I just try to think of something, maybe they could do something in libraries or something, you know, it's just hard for them, the younger ones that are kind of in these homes, raising kids, not, if they don't have a job, and if your husband's working all, and gone long hours, and you come home and you don't meet people, you know, it's hard for them sometimes. But they do a good service. That's all I had to, Peggy, I think.
I had nothing this week.
I just had Central Iowa, Juvenile Detention Center. But I know when we first built this, they, they kept saying we'd never pay for this building with what rates we were charging, you know. They, we'd never get it paid for where it paid for in three years. And they just lied, lied, lied to the legislators down there. And they got to believe in them. And that's why we're having such a time getting these beds.
So do you have more beds than that available then, Mort, that aren't going to be able to use?
We've got twenty more beds.
How many more?
Twenty beds, but I'm doing new.
That's what I wondered. They're trying to cap you, aren't they? They're trying to cap you off.
We gotta ship them from our detention center to another detention center and pay their rate.
And they charge three times as much.
Oh, three times.
How much?
You think you'll be able to get that raised again ever?
Well, they, see, they never were limiting on the beds until we started building. And then the detention centers were free to get it.
So you'd like to get the limit off, is what?
We'd like to just take the limit off. Port County has got, I don't know how many beds, and they don't even open, they got a full wing. They, they don't even open it because they can't pay the staffing for it. There are other centers that are the same way, got several beds, but they just don't staff them, so.
How many counties do you have now? Forty-seven?
Forty-two.
Take the rest of them to the list.
Yeah. We didn't build us no wing on. That was two million dollars. We already paid a million dollars of that off. So, I don't know.
Okay, I had no, no meeting this week, Peggy, so, short week. Okay, can we get claims approved here before we hit the range? Anybody have a chance to review their claims?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, go ahead, Mort.
I'm ready to approve the grants. They were eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cents. And grainy took fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I'll second this.
Motion to second to approve the grants for the house. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. Okay, we got a limit till about eight fifty for grainy. If you have any for Peggy.
My mic. Can you second to catch up?
Good.
Yeah.
Whip and call, he runs a tight ship and moves pretty fast.
Yes.
And make a trip.
That's what I could do. So it's like, oh.
You gotta get the computer, go real slow.
Oh.
That might be harder than you think, too.
When I was at ISAC last week, of course, they give out the certificates of service for those people who have been here. But they only do like elected officials and appointed elected heads within the ISAC group. So I've got the list together of the ones that we do. So I'm going to have Paul sign those when he has a chance here. We've got sixteen people, some of them are secondary room people, so I'll give those to Paul because he likes to present those.
Yeah.
About we'll present these next week. If that's all right with you guys?
Can I look at your list?
Yep, and they're cool. The ones that are highlighted are the ones we'll be giving out. I'll notify each of them so they can come to the meeting if they want to next week, and receive their certificates. If they're going to be gone, or if they're busy, we'll just get it to them later.
Look at that, okay.
That old guy there's getting on.
Why do you go wrong, Seth?
Yes, we hand out all of the Chuck and Paul.
And we did Harlan, man.
This is yours, Paul. I got you signed up for that meeting. There's your registration form. I need you to sign that so we can pay that for you.
Yeah.
Wanted to let you know that there was a, you know, from Walmart saying that there's a new plan that they added to the Walmart group. And if they wanted to change, we can take it. But I assume, at this point, yeah, we've already signed our, and it's kind of late for them to be taking that.
Somebody asked, somebody requested an option.
That's what I'm ordering, they did give them that.
They probably added another option.
Also, because of ISAC, we talked a lot about courthouse security. Several of us looked to that meeting. I put together what I call some directives, things that we probably want to give to the custodian of things to do on an appointment basis. But I want you to look them over. See if you agree. If there's anything on there that you don't think should be on there, let me know. I'll take it off. But I've heard enough in those classes to think that these are things that we should be doing every day. And it's just some observations that I've had as I've been around the courthouse. Most doors are locked at all times. There's a few that are open that probably shouldn't be. Outside doors, I know you guys have mentioned you're only certain outside doors locked. We can definitely do that. I can notify staff if we decide to lock the two doors by the recorder in the auditor's office. We can use our keys to get in if we need to get in and out those doors. That's not a problem. We'll just lock it back up when we're done.
So one time we talked, this is not in the works. We talked about having the fire department come up here after hours and walk through the place and the dark where the other things are.
Yep.
That's on the other schedule.
Yeah, we could just put that on the list. Yep.
It's one thing to walk through in the daylight, it's the other thing to walk through at night when the lights are out.
Yeah.
I think they'd be accepting that some night when they have a fire.
And I do have a good lead on a couple of people that can do ALs training for us.
That'd be great.
So I did hear of another county who's doing ALs training. They actually closed the courthouse in the afternoon so they could do the training, so that it wouldn't affect a lot of people coming to the courthouse. Which I suppose if you're doing active shooter or something like that, you probably wouldn't want a lot of people.
Yeah, you won't want the public in there.
So if I get someone who will actually come here, and I get a date in mind, I'll visit with you guys and see if that's something you want to hear.
Does Spencer, Clay County have a security guard down there, doesn't it, hey?
I don't know. I've called people from all over the place, that people, oh, this guy's good, and that guy's good, and nobody even tells me that.
You have a lot of time finding that.
So now I have a number for an auditor, and that does the training. So I'm going to try it.
They do a lot of time finding that.
Yeah. I think it's something the employees need, and they need to be safe. So, and Paul, when you had asked him for copies of, um, certain job instructions, and I just gave everything there was. So, you're welcome. We can go over that later.
Mort, I better.
And I think that's it. As far as courthouse goes, I think it's in good shape. There's nothing unusual going on, or any action right now at this point. I've got, still waiting for quotes. I had Smotter Sun come up and requested a quote from him for key fobs, because I thought maybe he could come up with a better price than our other quote. And for more bank buttons under desks and those type of things. So he should be bringing that back to us. Oh, you've got the actual one, do you want me to list?
What did the, 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 the?
I don't think it is, if you just find the right company and the right setup.
Now, those books should be changed. When people come on, you can update them all the time.
Yeah. And especially if we have a computer-based, where you go on and add people, take people off. It'll be designed and set the way, what I've been told by vendors, that when someone comes in, you know who's coming, you know who's leaving. So if for some reason the custodian comes in on Saturday, you know he's here at ten and he's out at twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keeps track of who's been.
Then you know who's here and who's not. Because sometimes you wonder, who in the world is there? You go by and there's a car, and you don't recognize it.
Yeah, they have that down at the high school.
Somebody leaves, you know, like right now, when somebody leaves employment, they're supposed to turn in their keys. They don't always, sometimes they get them to the next person. Sometimes, I don't know what happens to them, or they get another set. And then there's another set floating out there somewhere, and it's just, yeah, it's uncomfortable. So with these key fobs, you can deactivate them. If somebody leaves, then we deactivate the fob and then.
You got a warranty for it, for an annual fee, or what kind of?
Um, it's, it's costly at first to get it all set up, of course.
It's expensive per door.
Yeah. And then once they've got it set up, it's not so bad to do all the different doors. And we were just talking outside doors at this point, not even doing interior doors.
Yeah, that'd get really costly, get all the interior offices.
Yeah. And that would be something to look at in the future, you know, if we could maybe look.
So Peggy, when people get a key to the courthouse, is it just to this door, the only door, or would it open up more than one door?
Um, it depends on what their, the head of the department has told me. If the head of department wants them just to have the office key, that's all I give them.
Okay.
If they tell them, hey, I want them to have a courthouse key to, because they're going to be coming up and working nights or weekends or whatever, then I'll give them that key too. But otherwise, they just get an office.
Like our key to just main door is just one only.
Right, that's correct. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Peggy.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Uh, you need a motion?
We're going to the drainage.
I'll make a motion that we go in the drainage.
Second.
Motion to second to go in the drainage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carried. We are in the drainage.
Okay, I'll get there.
James Horace is there.
You bet.
Yeah, I can see us here. I sit next door. He's only meets six times a year. We have a representative from this county, and you're supposed to be related to.
I'll talk to Michelle sometime, see.
I don't think we have to anymore, remember? Just gals replace me down to the bank. It'd be good to have a board member too. I'll talk to Michelle.
I'll talk to her.
Walters?
You missed somebody out. Oh, I don't know that yet.
Just me too.
Is that where they meet? So there, is there, do we have some, anybody else? Is there anybody on our county site?
Me and myself, and I live in the bank.
Okay.
We don't have a county representative. And the other county's good.
And you were the representative.
I guess it's good because to make sure that people aren't, somebody's coming in.
Yeah.
You meet what, six times a year?
Four, five, six, seven, eight.
How about you?
Hello.
There were more.
So.
Nothing ever happens on my thing.
Look at us now.
I run a tight disk, I go, look, that's just.
I just go out there to shovel and fix them myself.
Uh-huh. I'm really going to buy that.
Well, it looks like your item is standing at BD 125. Authorize chairman to sign the contract document.
Yes, we've got the books back from Pretext and Denton Underground. This, we'll bind them to the contract. Yeah. And then we get a copy, First gets a copy, Pretext gets a copy, and Denton Underground gets a copy of all that. Have got their performance and payment bonds presented. Yeah, it'll be ready to go forward. I'll give you a little update on pond issue, yet we're working on, going to give you a summary on these other things. So.
First, I thought we needed a motion to authorize the chairman to sign his contract documents for BD 125. And if you want to sign, you have a big problem.
Okay, I'll make the motion for the chairman to sign the contract. Second.
Second, by Mort. Those who prepare for the motion, say goodbye to saying aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion is carried. All right, BD 114, reclassification hearing.
Yes.
We need to open a hearing on this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Name.
Yeah. I'll make motion to open a public hearing for reclassification.
BD 114.
One fourth.
Second.
Motion to open public hearing for reclassification, grade certificate 114. All right.
What you have before you is an alphabetical listing of landowners in that district. And we've spread the cost for the repair work. You probably remember, we ended up with two crossings under the railroad, two borings under the railroad, to make the repair. The hole developed in at least one of these, and the general maintenance by the railroad was putting more ballast in the hole, which basically blocked the tile. So the landowner was adversely affected up there, has been for some time. The railroad's levy, it looks heavy here. You see them listed on the first page, just fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, four through eight items there. What the commissioners and I did was looked at benefits that the railroad receives. Basically, if, if this district wasn't there, they'd be a swamp, that would be unstable. Also looked at what it would take for them to run a line. They could run a direct line from that little area down to the trick for thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. And that's about where their assessment comes out. And that's, that's basically it. We-
We have about one third or two remaining.
Yeah, mhm, that's correct, yep. That'd be, that'd be really, really close, maybe slightly more than a third. I haven't added them up exactly to see, but, um, yeah, the total spread is ninety-five thousand dollars, um, including the two crossings with the engineering interest, um, what was that total again? Ninety-five thousand.
Okay.
Any comments when we are, audience on this hearing with regard to reclassification, BD 114? Board members, got any more support, out there?
Well, I'll go to this point.
Yes, me too, and there is, this has been levied once, um, and there'll need to be a new levy made, and there's, Trish, did you say there's four properties that actually have a little credit?
Yes, there's four.
Okay.
Four.
So, that, for landowners, yeah, not for parcels.
The ones that I have for credit, I'm talking, the accumulation of many of them, maybe being, twelve dollars, twelve dollars to two nineteen.
Oh, all small.
Aggregation of small stuff.
Yeah. There was enough money setting there that a levy was made to try and keep interest down, and then now you've got the final report with this action. Um, the railroad has thirty days to appeal it, uh, so we'll just see where that, where they come from. You know, to me, the, actually, there's a landowner or two out there that would have the right to sue the railroad for a loss, um, because they, they basically blocked the pipe under the tracks.
So, what's this actually been cost the railroad?
Thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars.
That isn't enough.
Well, I thought I was really.
Probably that's what's causing the whole problem to start with.
Well, yeah, but we have to look, we can justify.
It costs more than that, the little gun come down from Omaha to come to the hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't think they can argue, they can't argue that they don't owe this amount.
I don't think so, and that's my goal, is to get it high as is reasonable, and, yeah, and get them to pay. Um, meantime.
Think you're gonna have a lot of taxpayers unhappy with this, we'll see.
But, you use the, you follow procedures that you, like commissioners, you've gotta stick to the, what you, you treat anybody else.
Well, that's, that's right, that's right.
You can't alter this because you're mad at them, I mean.
Yeah.
The last owners that were farming there were not happy, they were not gonna get a crop without doing something, so.
Right, yeah.
They're saying, "Well, you're getting it."
Right, that's right, that's what it came down to, it was like, what do we do if, you know, railroad just refuses, well, you did a reclassification, they have a court procedure to follow if they want to appeal it, otherwise, they owe that much, so.
They're willing to pay the bill if the railroad said.
That's right, because it needed to be done, you know, it's unfortunate, I wish.
But this is the proper way to do it, to get the railroad included.
Yes, you know, I wish they called as soon as the hole developed, but I suppose they, sometimes they just, nine times out of ten, they can probably get by with just filling the hole. This time it happened to be a county tile that blocked the drainage above it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Sometimes it happens to be a culvert or something running underneath the road, they just fill it.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Any other discussion with this copy? I entertain the motion to approve the public hearing.
Need a motion to approve it first, the reclassification.
I got one question, is the city a little more aware of what their?
I don't know.
Not here.
Assessment will be, because it's a fair amount to.
It's a fair amount of money, I don't know.
You need a motion first. I would make a motion to accept the reclassification report as presented this morning.
I'll second.
Okay, hold it in favor as a proposal for reclassification as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And then let us know if you're, so we're up to date what's going on.
And, and the city, if they inquire about this, should be made aware that they can spread out that assessment just like anybody else.
Yeah, I see they've got a pretty large.
So, yeah, so it should be less than a thousand dollars a year for ten years, I would say, so. It's a chunk if they had to pay it all at once.
It really is. It's a stress on the small.
Yeah, because they just don't have budget, so.
This is my update, I went through, although, check again.
Very good.
Okay, just so you know, um, I gave Trish BD two meaning out of lie reclassification report today, it's ready for commissioner's signatures, I met with them, and they just have to come in and sign it now, so we'll be setting a hearing for that, that's the big one with all the issues out there. BD eleven, that report, the commissioners and I have met on that, that report has been delivered now, uh, we're just waiting for commissioner's signatures on that also, so, those BD two will be putting on your agenda, and it, and when we put it on the agenda, I'll go over those with you on how, how those were done, uh, and what kind of assessments you were expecting.
As part of the listening.
Um, on that same job, BD two, um, I know, I was thinking some arrangements had been made with Doug Marshall to do some repairs, but it appears to be Scott Peterson from Badger that does those, um, I got a call from Russ Neves and somebody else, and, and they picked up Scott Peterson, and they're willing to do it. Um, BD six, open ditch, down towards four, we're gonna be giving you a report on some tile, to make the tile look right, we're gonna ask that the upper mile of that ditch be cleaned out on an hourly basis, just to have a decent outlet. Trish and I talked about, it's between Texas and State, we've got the two streets, just north west of four, about a mile and a half, or two miles, so.
What's the ditch like below that?
There's a, there's, I talked to my tech again, he's been gonna give me a summary, there's about a fourth to a third of it, of the entire ditch system that needs cleaning, uh, slip offs and things have happened, uh, so I hope to get that to you in the next week or two also, so we can work with you to make a decision on how to approach that one. There's an inquiry on BD twenty-two outlet, that's just north of Humboldt on the west side, um, who was it that was in here? Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We're gonna look at it possibly a flat gate on the outlet pipe.
That's what we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, yeah, there's a bulkhead there, I wanna see how much pipe is sticking out, uh, I've talked to, uh, let's see, who's gonna, who's gonna do that work? That was gonna be, uh, Jensen, yeah, Jensen.
You've talked to Martin.
I talked to Gary Jensen, and he, yeah, he's talked a lot, we, we're gonna work together to pick out the right kind of flat gate to put on there. Basically, it's gonna be very inexpensive, and this'll be a good test to see how it really works. Does it stop the back floor adequately, or is, or we have to get more extreme with it? Um, the other option is to put a separate outlet pipe, or a separate outlet for the low area, but that'd cost a ton more money to do. Um, BD seven, lateral run, just east of Bradgate, about three miles, we cleaned out the main open ditch, but there was a petition to do lateral eye, um, is the work order signed already on that one, or it's gonna be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Already clean out on that?
Yeah.
Yep, right here.
County key, Rick Peterson is, has been arranged already to do that work, uh, so, yes.
Good, good, I didn't know if he was back doing it or not.
I got a call last week from Kibber Optics Company Inspector, they're laying the line across the county, um, they're starting over just south of Gilmore, supposed to be meeting up with him yet today, he expressed concern on all the county tile and wanting to know where.
Were they laying that in the right of way then, or were they laying that line, or is it in the field?
Well, I assume it's in the right of way from where he talked, but I'm not sure.
I think so.
Yeah, Paul'd probably be able to tell you on that. But it, his concern was the tile, and the guy that called was the inspector, and it's, apparently, they put the duty on him to, to try and avoid these county tile, and they know there's a lot of them, so.
Yeah.
On BD 125, the one's gonna be signing the contracts for, um, I've been working with Doug Adams at NRCS and Mark Dickey, we may enlarge that pond at the north end, if able to do that, we might still get some, a silt basin only north of the road. Now, the goal is to do about the same amount of dirt work, so there's very little increase in cost, but we're working out the details with NRCS.
Still down farther to start it, you mean near to make the farm?
Well, actually, extend it to the north, we'll move the dam north.
Oh.
What happens is, it's narrow until you get to a point, well, it's quite a ways north, then it widens out, and Mark Dickey lives right there, and he says, "Once it gets there, there's no erosion because it's so wide."
Widen out again.
Yeah.
It isn't the deep going.
Right, yeah, it's not all concentrated, it's low, so, um, my bowling with the state said there could be some additional funds available, um, Doug Adams at NRCS says there could be at least some funds to go towards that from NRCS, but it won't be available till July first.
Sure.
So, uh, the county, we have talked to the contractor about it somewhat, and they have, their intention before this even developed was that they would wait to do the pond last, they'd do all the work, let it drain out, um, and then come and temporarily block the pipe and go to work on the dam, and it won't take them long to build it, actually, so. So, we're hoping we can get all these details worked out well ahead of construction on the, on the pond area itself. I hope over the next month we get the details worked out. Doug Adams, he remembers being out there and they gathered, uh, survey information, but they can't find it, since the project fell through, they're afraid that, I think it was a trugger that was doing the work, they're afraid that some of these, if they just died, they got rid of some of the information. He's still looking for it, otherwise, we'll have to get a little survey information out there. Mark Dickey has said that he did work with us, I told him that any contribution he could make would help the cause, and he's found a logger that would help, or just take out the trees that would be in the flooded area, so, he's making that arrangement to get that taken care of.
Okay, can you have that monitored before we start?
Yes, that would be wonderful. Um, and I'm gonna come back with a recommendation on the upper part of ditch eighteen, that's just southeast of Laverne, not far. Yeah. There's a mile and a half to two miles that has silted back in, it was cleaned out about twelve to fifteen years ago, uh, I'm gonna go by it again and get another look at it, if we can do it hourly, it saves some money.
And stretch it heads to the back to the northwest, where we put a new box culvert in, and it's silted and bad.
Exactly right.
Does it ruin?
Yeah.
I've been out looking at that one.
The problem is, there's so little silt, it's flat, the grade of the ditch is flat.
Oh, yeah, blows in.
So, it, silt gets into it, blows in, it runs in, it, yeah, and we'll look at filter strips and things too up there.
Filter strips would help.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe there's just a few intakes or something, we could do that around, but I'm gonna look at it again today on my way back.
Fifteen years is a two.
No, no, that's it, that's the whole thing.
I mean, we want, if we do it this time, we don't want it to be another fifteen years.
That's right, and it, it sounds like two Rick Petersons have looked at it now, and they both say it needs it, so.
Oh, that's good enough.
Yeah, there you go.
True.
Yeah, yeah, so, we got the bases covered there. So, yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell for things we've, we've got your updates for.
So busy.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna go through some cases, shoulders.
Yes, that's right.
Oh, find out a new jury on that. I was, called me about the other day.
Oh, yeah, we gotta work on that, we got that rolling, didn't we?
What are they gonna do?
Well, they're gonna go out there and, he's gonna have his, um, is he gonna get, young, or who is he getting, is it Young?
No.
No, 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 no.
Marsha?
Mar.
Not Marsha.
Mansky.
Mansky.
I called and left a message for him.
And he was on the phone talking, he was at a conference when you called him, and what was Benworth's first name?
Brad.
Yeah, we talked to him, he had called him too, so they both made contacts, and he wants to get him to go out there and do a little pre-gating, just to check some spots to see what's going on, before they get carried away, but they think there's something going on, because it's not draining water as quickly as it always has, so. I'd rather have him do that than try to run a scope, or try to run a cam or something, if he has an idea where it might be a problem, why don't go out there and do a little inspections and find out what's going on.
You can do a lot of that for not too much money.
Yeah.
So, I think it's up in that area, BD 103, where there was a few hundred feet to be replaced last year, where I doubt it was done, you haven't heard any, that's the one where I think you heard.
That was due to town, you mean?
No, this was southeast of town, yeah, southeast of all.
You're already work up there?
Yeah.
I don't think they've done it yet, have they?
They're gonna repair somebody on it.
Basically, south of the Boones.
Oh, great, was that 103?
Yeah.
Right.
Because that was all arranged, and the landowner had talked to the contractor, and I'll bet that one.
We talked to Mancey the other day, he's ready to get in.
Okay, okay, that's the deal. I hadn't, I thought they were gonna try and get it last fall, but, yeah, but they worked for a lot of people.
I got stuff for you, Rick.
Yeah.
We visited with Paul last week, a little bit about some of these small jobs that just never seem to get done, and I suggested maybe we have some county guys do some of these projects in July and August when their work slows down, and he wasn't totally against it.
Oh, okay, sure.
So, I'm gonna visit with him some more about some of that stuff.
Oh, and we'd be glad to work with him as far as anything we've been involved in there.
Because, I mean, they got the equipment, the guys know how, the guys know how to do it.
Absolutely.
Um, at least then, you know, if stuff doesn't get cleaned up, let's get it done.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, the landowners need to have it done.
Absolutely, absolutely, I like the idea.
How do you go back for it?
Yeah, and then the secondary roads can get built back through the.
Through the district.
Sure, nice thing, they've got three locations out there, and they're pretty close to some of those, you don't have to hire a contractor that's, you know, the county doesn't want to come over there.
Because a lot of times, these small projects, it's hard to get contractors to do it, because they got big tiling projects that have good money on them.
Yep, Trish has a battle with that.
And boring and stuff like that, so they don't want to spend time doing the tiling.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them only work on charities on their day off, because that's the only time they have.
Yeah, yeah, you run into a lot of that, yeah, it's been like pulling teeth, no, I think, I think that could work.
I'll have to have Paul with it, power about that.
Sure, I think that could work out pretty well, really.
So, have we gotten any response back on this bill from Amy's, matter to word?
No, I can hear from Bob or.
Okay. Bob, did talk to them directly.
Okay.
And there was some discussion about time he spent repairing the equipment, because he was out there, frost was starting to come in, um, but he lost the time and things, um, so he wasn't sure what he could reproduce, the contractor, so, we'll see.
All right, we'll give that some time.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick, for the day.
Yeah, do that, thank you.
Any other questions concerning drainage? They were taking the machines to the house.
About a hour, second.
Hold it in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Code name, motion carrying, alright.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Rick. Looks like our next item is going to be at nine thirty, so I understand, we'll just take a, take a break.
Okay.
Peggy Jensen?
Did you, did you have something? Who's here? Just here. Okay.
Would it be possible?
One fourteen.
You just want the, uh, the numbers?
Yeah.
I mean, I've got a sound recorder, but there's, there's the, yeah, this is what they're being claimed from.
I don't know, they told me for years it's so flat.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We decided that's a way to.
To the creek, it's just not enough water.
I hope he's.
Sometimes you put a little bigger tile and just move the water.
Got it, same thing.
The tiles we. We put in something new. Get it collapsed under the pile, load the new steel pipe under the tractor.
There's not much slope, but don't move very fast.
Yep, bottom row, last page, ninety-five thousand is what they're gonna spread out for a living. Yeah, so.
Something's lost, five to five years.
Yes, yes, yeah, work out with those. Yep, that's just the, the insurance, uh, the bond, performance bond. Those are all.
Max and Benny's problem.
I think so.
Max and Benny's problem, is that where you're getting them from?
Yeah.
Well, that'll be another pretty big project.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, the Addison Valley, I thought you said the Addison.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, it was a lot of dirt to get that bike to the ground.
Improvement three times and been remodeled.
Still get deep where we're going, we're getting the.
Don't wanna get it done, so get it done.
Contact us, we can send with.
Well, get more people involved because you pull the city of Addison.
It'd be interesting.
Digital hardware has involved a lot of, a lot of different parties there.
Yes, yes.
Doesn't really bother them that much.
The contractors said they just have all their people and equipment here.
They probably don't care if they don't, just basically get some little water in. Sounds like.
I don't think they have a big project there, I hear.
That's right.
They do a lot more from others.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
From out west.
Yeah, and there's the.
Thing out west.
Something like that.
Think that, think that, if you look at the grades, I think you got the.
And I wondered, am I gonna add that on to my bill?
I'm not sure you'd have to ask him, he's, it's old business. I mean, it's, it's the eighties and about five or six years ago it was brought in.
They're gonna have, hard for somebody to look at. No, hard.
You went, no, no. Copy of the show.
So, I would, so I would come up to contract.
Which one's that? I don't think that was on our listing.
Sometimes you just do berries.
Yeah.
That'd be a good one.
You don't know.
Yeah, they may not make, you may have something like that.
Oh, geez, that's why I'm.
Well, again, you know, when it's been a pile and you.
Eighteen dollars a dollar.
When you get twenty-five inches of rain, even as a quarter inch, there's a lot of time to get it back to the end of the first half. And it's, there's a few of them going off, but it didn't have very top.
But all else are down the.
It's like pipeline.
Do a four inch rain, you get another two inch rain a week later. That's not like from the. One time I had water sitting there till about the middle of July. You have to go down and. I think, well, you must, probably, yeah, for saying, I would say, I could have great views of last two months. Yeah, like, yeah, you put a new main, come there because they ran it, yeah, along the side of the main. And they just never got over it. And that, and that helped.
Well, you didn't there, buddy?
But what they do is they look at, they don't, they don't, and they get excited because we got a great, just doing this. Have you, have a hour in high praise in here?
I was like, oh, gee, Obama.
Two, two, two years. You've answered the questions at least twice in my career.
Then what?
You've answered the questions on this problem at least twice in my career.
Oh.
On the one by Addison.
Oh.
Cause it was remonstrated in the sixties, the eighties, and like two thousand.
Okay, okay, yes, yes. The one that comes, one of them comes right up into town.
Like, your school and you fixed the main and, and opened that.
Where all the trees were, yeah.
And that had to help a lot.
Had to.
It had to, it's get you back to capacity, you're supposed to be all of one tenth of an inch of day.
Yeah, yeah, it's small.
If I remember right, isn't it, isn't the outlet got some slope and then it splatters and the cow.
Pretty sure you're right, yeah. Pretty sure you're right.
You got another one that runs through my grandmother's if you wanna fix that. Twelve inch tile and seven hundred acres, you bet, that drains real well.
Oh.
Fix that one.
Fix that one, yeah, yeah.
Drain in eighty or six inch tile. Better yet, which we, I mean, he sends a bunch of water, what do you got, snow on your pickup for, where do you get it?
You got snow on your pickup? Yeah, we got a sneak. Yeah.
That's my service, my wrestling.
I'm lucky, I'm here to.
Yeah.
I've been driving.
Yeah. We have the white.
Yeah, you get it.
Yeah, there's nothing else about it.
I was driven, I saw it, because he was driven into the parking lot, and the hell's the water, make up your shirt.
I was just here for that, okay.
Yeah.
Oh. Is it part of the.
I'm not sure.
He's in Arizona.
I saw a thing about himself.
I don't know why he's down, but he's south Phoenix or somewhere.
Well, I, he didn't say anything.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Oh, my God.
What happened is he got the flat tires.
No, no.
He's going to vacation.
That's a good thing.
Hey, who said that? Oh, my God. Well, you go there, look at his name, who is that guy? How did we list him? How many years?
He's on the.
Oh, I thought you had to do it. Well, yeah, you gotta sign, but Paul gives you, yeah.
Bob's lawyer.
Oh, that's how you can know, that makes sense. Lawyer. How many years?
How many years to stay there?
Thirty.
Twenty, twenty years and thirty-eight more?
No, I figured I'd.
I thought that was cordial, that's why I don't.
Condition. My wife.
She works at Kathy, that's what it is, so she works at, uh, the. Case worker. Yeah, dies here.
I was fifteen, I'm great.
I just told her by late.
Oh, really?
I mean, she's got to be too.
Yeah, you have your staff.
How many years did she have?
Last week. No, we didn't go. Yeah, and it's like three, two.
Good.
Yeah, and I think, I don't know, I have you there, but the couple was the couple and are still again.
Good deal.
I don't ever say nothing, don't know.
After their original investigation, they, a period of, from nothing's different, they all told the family, so they found there's a gas leak, but the official reports say it's undetermined.
It went, went. Yeah. What's that? I don't have a lot, I usually can hand the shit out.
It says something like, publish in the paper and then.
Absolutely, leave them. Just the one that I don't. I don't know what to get to the last minute for the clock, man.
Is this something like published in the paper?
Absolutely, leave them.
All right.
Just the one that I'm, Trish forgot to shut off. I don't know what to get to the last minute for the clock.